I'd like to call this first meeting of September of the Pots Grove School Board to order. And with that, we'll begin it with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary will please get the roll. And you're having their executive section announcements. I don't think there were any. There was an executive session held on Friday, September the 4th to discuss personnel and litigation. So here we are. So we're good to go. Thanks very much. Now we move on. No, Ashley's not here to do my public comment, so we'll wait for her to come back. Can't do public comment without you. This is Custer. So can't do public comment without you.
Oh, sorry.
So next, next item there is public comment. So as you know, the basic round rules are public comment 3.1. Public comment is anybody's allowed to speak on agenda topics, anything on the agenda, 4.1 on down. Anything that's up for discussion this evening for up to three minutes, two to three minutes. You announce your name, your address, and then go ahead and give us your comments and off you go. So you do that by putting your hand up and the secretary will recognize you and then open your mic and then off you go.
Okay, our first hand raised is from Jeanne Locke. Jeanne, you'll be unmuted and then if you can state your name and your address, you'll have two minutes for a public comment. But I'm unable to unmute her from here.
Can you privacy settings? Hi, Ashley. That was a mistake. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem.
I'll put it down.
Okay. Okay, our next hand raised is Marisa Neeson. Marisa, if you can state your name and address, you'll be unmuted and you'll have two minutes. Go right ahead. There you go.
Marisa Neeson, 1993 Deer Ridge Drive. First and most importantly, congratulations to the newest student school board representative, whomever that may be. I am certain that there was an amazing pool of candidates from which to choose as Pots Grove students are quite impressive. At least one candidate was missing from the most recent round of interviews due to his decision to withdraw his applications for the reasons that I'm about to share. That candidate completed the application and went through the process as outlined in your student board representation policy 004.1, including a dynamic interview with school administrators and was then recommended as a finalist for the position. For some reason, however, it was decided by this board to no longer follow that policy and to begin the process again. Those reasons were never explained to the original finalists. They were simply notified that their interviews had been canceled. Having read the student board representation policy quite thoroughly, it would seem that it was followed exactly as it is written, so one can assume that the decision was not made based on a policy infraction. Instead, it seems like the decision was made due to a personal issue of a board member or members. It has been brought to my attention that derogatory comments were made and disparaging rumors were alleged concerning this candidate and this candidate's family in front of and directly to other school board members on multiple occasions and in various settings. Another board approved policy I would like to reference is policy number 249, which defines bullying in summary as intentional or deliberate, carried out repeatedly, and occurring where there is an imbalance of power. It goes a bit further to reference gossiping and the spreading of rumors and references an organization whose mission is, in part, to welcome diversity and inclusivity as well as to change a culture of cruelty to a culture of civility. While I am disgusted and deeply saddened by the discriminatory comments and blatantly false rumors spoken by a member of this board, I am equally disappointed by those that allowed it to occur to an innocent 16-year-old student. There are bullies and there are bystanders, and both contribute to a systemic problem. It is incredibly disheartening to learn that this occurred among adults elected to represent all students. Those that allowed this to happen, whether by listening to the absolutely appalling comments made and doing nothing about it or by bowing down to this absurdity, you missed an opportunity to be an upstander and to do the right thing. And for that, you should be ashamed. In response to the question asked of why this candidate pulled his application, the simple answer is that this candidate felt attacked and discriminated against by the very people elected to represent each and every student of the Pots Grove School District, regardless of their race, color, creed, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or the sport that they choose to play. I will conclude with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you, Marisa. All right, and that's it.
You're welcome, Ashley.
That was.
Lingan, I'll move on to section 4.4. We've all the minutes.
Make a motion to combine 4.1 and 4.2.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second from Mrs. Grimm. Was it, oh, Ms. McIntyre. We have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second for Ms. McIntyre to combine 4.1 and 4.2. Do we have any questions on those two? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to receiving of the accounts for audit, 5.1.
Oh, thank you. I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion for Mr. Grimm and a second from Mrs. McIntyre to receive the accounts for audit and file them. Are there any questions on that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
I move to approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $6,849,530.70 for August 2020 as presented.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills to grant the orders. Does anyone have any questions on that?
A question. I see we're paying $25,000 for map testing. Mr. Nestor, can you just remind us what the annual cost of that is? Is it the $25,000 or do we pay that in installments or what?
I believe we only pay it once a year, but let me verify that and I'll get back to you later in the, in the meeting.
Thank you. Just a comment. I've had concerns about the cost versus efficiency and usefulness of the map testing since we began. I continue to have those concerns and questions. I hear that it's used in a positive way next few months. Now certainly it's not the time. We're trying to get schools started, but I'll be asking teachers directly from them, not the handpicked teachers, to get a feel for, is this an efficient use of our taxpayer money? It seems to me, from what I've seen from the map testing and what we gained from it, that there's other more efficient ways to do this. But I'll be looking to the experts for their opinion over the next few months. And if they say it's a positive way of using, you know, $25,000 plus dollars of the taxpayer money, then great. If not, I'll be bringing this back to the board and ask that we reconsider it for next school year. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
I move we approve the Treasury, Treasury report for August 2020 as presented and file for audit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Treasury report and file it for audit. Are there any questions on the Treasury report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Port of the superintendent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lingan. Tonight, before we have our student board representative report, we'd like to welcome our newest member, Matt Beckel, to the table. And as filling the scene as a junior representative. And Matt, I'd just like to give you the floor for a couple of minutes to tell the board and the community a little bit about yourself. And welcome tonight. And I'm sure the board members will chime in when I'm finished, but I just wanted to welcome you personally as a superintendent, give you a chance to do, just report out, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I've been in Pots Grove my whole life. I've attended four out of five schools. And I really fell in love with the culture here. I love going to Pots Grove every day. It's like a highlight for me. I'm part of the wrestling team and baseball team. I did marching band my freshman year, so I'm well suited with kids of all around Pots Grove. I'm very friendly. You can always come up and talk to me, no matter what. I'm not gonna like barking you and make you go away. Whenever I put my mind to something, I finish it and I'd say I'm persistent with everything I do.
Thank you. Great qualities and great characteristics. We're happy to have you. Before we move on to Madison's report, I don't know if Matt, I don't think any part of that, I think just you tonight, Madison, thank you. Would any board members want to weigh in?
I can't hear what he was saying.
Would any other board members like to weigh in on tonight's?
Matt, Mr. Parker here. I'm on Zoom. Again, very happy to have you with us. You don't remember me, I'm sure. I remember you from many years ago and very proud of the young man you've become and super pleased that you'll be working with the school board.
Well, I'll jump in, Matt. Congratulations. I'm so proud of you and welcome aboard. It's really a lot of fun. You're gonna love it. Welcome aboard, buddy.
Matt, congratulations. Welcome to the board. Hope you have a good experience here for the next couple of years. Thanks.
Matt, thank you for being willing to serve.
Congratulations.
Just wanted to offer congratulations and looking forward to working with you here.
I will jump in too. Congratulations and looking forward to a good year.
Mr. Beckel, I also wanted to echo that. You are one of nine that we interviewed. Everybody, everybody that put in application and when we went back to confirm that everybody wanted to come in, everybody that confirmed that they would come back was interviewed. We all interviewed all of the candidates and we had an exceptional group of candidates to talk to. And it took us not very much time to settle on you as our, as our chosen candidate for this year as our representative. And we're very happy to have you. And we couldn't go far wrong with any of the, any of the people that came before us. And it's a credit to Pots Grove and we hope that you take this, this opportunity to work with us and to work with your classmates and to bring whatever you learned here, for the good, bad, or indifferent, back to your, back to your classmates and to talk about what you learned here and to take this experience forward with you about the things, how you can work with people, the things you can learn, how to talk to people, how not to talk to people, how to learn consensus, how to hopefully govern, and maybe sometimes what not to do as well. Because that's what it is. It's about compromising. It's about learning. It's about trying to lead. It's about all the different things that will serve you in life. And it's all the different leaders. You mentioned your coach, your wrestling coach, and some of the other folks that you've worked with. And it's everybody. Everybody contributes a little bit. And we're hoping to help shape you a little bit in a different way than you've had before. The folks at Western Center, the wrestling coach, the, the folks who taught you the instruments that you learned. Everybody touches you a little bit and teaches you something. We're hoping to teach you something a little bit different. So welcome and we look forward to working with you.
And Matt, I just want, I just want to let you know you have a couple of messages, excuse me, messages in the chat that are congratulating you from some of the building administrators. So just take a look at that.
Okay, thank you everyone for your comments. And again, welcome, Matt. I look forward to working with you throughout this year. At this time, I'd like to move on to action items for personnel. We're gonna start with 9.1. And that is professional staff leave of absence. We are recommending you approve the professional staff member's leave of absence as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve nine action item personnel. So that would be nine through nine, four. Nine, one through nine, four.
What about nine, five?
You can do nine, five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to combine nine, one through nine, five, all of the personnel items. Does anybody have any questions on any of those, nine, one through nine, five? Hearing no questions, all those in favor of nine, one through nine, five, the personnel items indicate so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for business, 10.1, a confidential settlement agreement for one student. We are asking the board to approve the authorization of a confidential agreement as presented.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 10, one, and 10, two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 10, one and 10, two, which are confidential settlement agreements for two individual students. Does anybody have any questions on 10, one or 10, two? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no, please. So ordered without objection.
I'm making a motion to combine 11.1 through 11.3.
No, second.
We have a motion to combine items 11.1 through 11.3, which are education items, conference attendances, conference attendance to virtual conferences. All those, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions on 11, one to 11, three? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
You know what the action items miscellaneous? I'd like to have a motion to appoint student board rep, Matt Beckel, at this time.
I move. Your turn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Matt Beckel as the student board representative for a two-year term. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say no. And now, search is official. Congratulations.
We know what the committee items, 13.1, the policy committee. Mr. Parker, would you care to report out on your meeting that was held on August 25, 2020?
Yes, we reviewed several policies at personnel or at the policy committee. A number of them related to Title IX, which went into effect on August 14th, requiring us to add and update the number of policies. Title IX relates to the federal civil rights that prohibit sexual discrimination in any educational setting. The first policy we looked at was in addition to the policies we have as recommended by our attorneys to reflect the language and requirements of Title IX. That was policy 103, non-discrimination based on sex. Most districts in the county really follow the same policy. Some other policies we looked at that we had to adapt some wording, policy 103, discrimination. It was retitled discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting students. And similar to that, 104, discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting staff. We reviewed those, didn't make any changes, and moved them to 30-day public review as well. Next two policies, 247 hazing and 249 cyberbullying. We had recently reviewed them, but so we just needed to make some minor additions to reference Title IX and send those to 30-day as well. We also added a policy that was not in our system, 252, dating violence. So this is a new policy. We changed some of the wording, to be clear, from school behavior, non-school behavior, or behavior that occurs outside of school, changed wording to things such as discipline where appropriate and/or refer to the proper persons or, or authority. So if we become aware of dating violence that we're unable to address appropriately in school, we will be referring that to the appropriate authorities and/or parents. Also related to Title IX, policy 824, maintaining professional adult-student boundaries, and policy 317.1, educator misconduct were addressed and appropriate wording was added, with just minor changes. We also looked, because of the new way of doing school now temporarily, hopefully, we reviewed policy 204, attendance. We had made it a change to this last spring to allow for the virtual instruction. We found that that wording needed to be removed and the policy for now is worded in such a way that allows the flexibility for the administrators to count students in attendance as appropriate. We do believe that, or I am hopeful at least, that absences will be greatly decreased through the use of virtual instruction. Excuses that were acceptable previously won't necessarily be acceptable or necessary moving forward. But again, the flexibility stays in the policy to allow the administrators to meet the needs of our students. And that is the policies that we have looked at so far. Any questions?
Mr. Parker, it's Patty. I have one question. Where can the parents in the community find these policies listed? If they wanted to review them?
Yeah. Dr. Harney or Mr. Bicker, can you give a specific, I know it's on the website, but can you specifically state off the top of your head where on the website they, they would go to find, to find them?
I believe it would be in board docs that is open to the public. And there's a drop-down menu on the left-hand side of the screen that has active policies and 30-day review policies. So they can go in at any time and see what is active and what is in review.
Okay. And I'll take a look at that as, as we're going along in the meeting, make sure it can be easily found. Let me say two before I conclude my report. I was gonna state it, new business, but I think it fits under the policy committee report. I had received a concern last spring, I guess it was, regarding our policy on student board reps and how we do that. I asked and directed Dr. Harney to put that on a future agenda for us to review. However, at that time in the process, in time of year, we were bound to that policy.
I would like to say publicly what I have said privately. We had and have no right to violate a policy because we disagree with it, because some disagree with it, or feel it's not being followed. The policy was followed by the administration, and the policy worked. The board chose to go around that policy, which was wrong and should not have happened. In addition, you know, we have a fine line, because I feel it's appropriate for us to hear from our constituents, students, staff, parents, taxpayers, community members, but we need to be very careful when we're making decisions at a board level, to never make a decision based on any kind of unconfirmed gossip. If we're looking at policy, if we're looking at procedures, how we do things, if we're looking at is how is someone doing their job, we need to make sure it's based on fact and not gossip. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for that report. Mr. Linger, we move on to 14 new business.
With us, Bob?
Item 14, new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up at this time?
Mr. Chairman? Somebody else want?
Please.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Nestor regarding some conversations that took place, and I'd like a clarification about, Matt, cost of busing. The cost of busing was sent in an email at $90,000 per month, but that's the, my question is this, that reflects the total cost of busing for the entire district per month. The cost of busing for what I'll call parochial schools, or non-public schools, or whatever, is approximately $9,500 per month. Does that $9,500 represent the incremental cost for busing, I'll call it, parochial students? Is that a correct assessment? $9,500 a month? Dave Nestor, you still here?
I'm here. I just want to make sure I answer you properly. The cost of non-public transportation is about $17,500 per month. That's the cost, but in the subsequent year, we will receive a subsidy of about $8,000, which brings it down to the $9,500 net cost that was shared with the board. So that's a $9,500 net cost per month to transport the non-public school students.
Okay, so the net cost for, let's assume that the district does not provide busing for three months. The net cost to the district would be three times 95, or 28,500. Am I correct?
No, if we chose not to transport for three months, we would save that much money. The board, the school district would save.
That would be the savings, yes.
Yes.
For three months, thank you. Wondering if we would want to reconsider that issue in light of the potential for some of the other potential negative consequences of that action. Let me be specific, what's the, if you're going to do a risk analysis, you would ask yourself the question, what's the probability of a lawsuit? What's the cost of the litigation? And what's the cost of the settlement? So the 28,5 represents the maximum savings deducted by something else. Now, there's also the other question, what are other benefits not accounted for in this very simplistic analysis? So are there other potential savings that we didn't include when this discussion was held by email? Well, my question is, my question deals with the issue of busing parochial students, you know, 28,5 nominal amount for the size of this district. If you ask how much mileage it represents, my guess is it's about half a mil, you know. Is it worth not busing parochial students for half a mil? But that's a benefit, you're talking about busing to the Western Center, correct? That's busing our students, that's not a benefit for somebody else, that's a benefit for our kids.
Mr. Lapik, we can't hear your side of the conversation.
If we do, we pay for busing from people's towns to the school and dispersing from there.
Well, then the question is, we should really use as our reference number the $90,000. So therefore, it's basically either all or nothing. It's either, we either bus parochial kids and bus our own kids, or we bus nobody. Mr. Nestor, is it really that binary a decision?
I think the choice of transporting non-parents can stand alone. At this point, we don't have our kids in school, so the cost of those, that transportation is not going to occur, with the exception of the minor items that we are currently transporting.
So you're saying that the, the non-public students, or the parochial students, is a separable issue from the other issues, the issue of busing from, to Western? Am I correct?
We're currently busing from the high school to the Western Center. So that is taking place. So your question, that's not going to change, that is not going to change if you make your decision on transporting, a different decision of transporting the non-public students.
Okay, then I'm, then I think it might be worthwhile, because we're talking about a relatively nominal amount, 28,5 as our net savings for busing parochial students. You know, and I still want to make sure I'm not going off the deep end and doing something extremely stupid.
Well.
And Bob is ready there to tell me I am.
No, no. What I would say is that we kept it relatively simple and relatively clean for several purposes. We talked about, we talked about the hybrid plan was to give the maximum freedom, the maximum choice, to the maximum number of people. That was the idea, to keep things as normal as it could possibly be. All of the non-public students would continue on as however they chose to go. All of the people at Pots Grove who chose to come back to school would come back to school. All the teachers at Pots Grove that wanted to come back to school would come back to school. All the special education kids that needed to be in touch with their special education teachers would be in touch with their special education teachers here in the school buildings. Everything was going to continue on, it needed to continue on. Anybody that was afraid to come back to school, or who had a legitimate health concern, or who was susceptible to the virus, was going to be taught remotely. That was the plan of the hybrid, and none of the furloughs would happen. That was the plan. Okay, we decided against that, we decided we were going to go with the full virtual. And so, to save the maximum amount of money, we said, we're not going, we're going to abandon all the busing to give us the maximum amount of savings, the maximum amount of savings to present, or to prevent the huge budgetary shortfall that we expected to happen. So when we found out that Western Center was going to continue, because they had a plan to do that, we said, okay, how can we do that thing, that one thing separately? And by busing those students from this location to that location, that was a separable bit of busing that we could do, because it's not taking them from their homes to here, and then from here to there, it was just from here to there, it was a separable action. If you do anything different, it starts to convolute the deal. Having said that, very soon, we're going to have to start talking about what we are going to do with special education students. When I say very soon, what time period are you envisioning for that discussion?
I am visioning that.
So, we're weeks away from talking about this in another context, anyway. So once we start talking about special education students maybe coming back into the buildings, this one, or lower, or west, or rocks, or whatever, at that time, we're going to be re-examining the busing question then. Do we expect to be bringing them back in the building? Are we going to be busing them? When honestly start talking about busing them to those schools, all bets are off, and we're going to be talking about, you know, busing parochial kids again, anyway.
May I do not want to be in the position of second guessing the administration, especially when this is a very plastic situation where conditions are changing dramatically. I understand your point that when this position was taken, it was taken in anticipation of a different situation than we're at now. It was taken in anticipation of being in a hybrid situation, which did not come to pass. My point still comes that this may be something that may be worth reassessing. Reassessing it in a couple of weeks, next time we're going to meet is a couple of weeks, so it sounds like you're going to be reassessing this very, very soon, anyway. So, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 I interrupted you, I was agreeing with you, I wasn't interrupting you, I was agreeing with you.
So it still seems like this is a point which needs to be revisited, and I'd be willing to table this and revisit it when we start talking about the SEC. Thank you for your time for comment.
We can, we, it's, there's no easy answers. We've all, we've all been wrestling with this issue for months now, we have, and there are no easy answers, and there's not, I don't think we're going to find any anytime soon. We do want to do, we do want to find the.
I mean, I'll bring up again that this is a relatively, on the scale of this, this district, 28,5 is a relatively nominal amount.
Yeah. It's new business, so if you'd care to, you know, take it any further, you're certainly free to, and, you know, make a motion, or anybody wants to second the motion, or anything, there, I mean.
As I said, if we're going to be talking about this when we discuss special ed transportation, we'll bring it up at that time.
Okay.
So I don't think it's worth a separate motion.
Okay.
I had an item, I had an item as well. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if Dr. Ziegler and Mr. Onspock are on the call? I wanted to ask, I think since we met last, there's been some updates with regard to sports, the spectators, the numbers of spectators permitted, the county, you know, with everything else, everything changes constantly, and I want to make sure that our meetings don't, sometimes they might not align with the timing of seasons, and so if there's been a change from the league, from the county, that frees up spectator attendance and things of that nature, I wanted to check with them to see what those updates might be as of today, they may even change today, and see what we might be able to discuss here in our meeting together.
Hi, Mr. McIntyre, this is Bill Ziegler. So our Governor Wolf did update the spectator guidelines for athletic events, and as a Pioneer Athletic Conference, we're discussing them, hopefully putting out guidelines conference-wide to set, you know, what that looks like across the conference, and we're even working internally in our athletic department to do very similar things. We're excited for the opportunity to be able to have spectators, but it is limited.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Are there any other items in business, Dr. Shirk?
No, Mr. Linger, I have none. Saving it for down the road.
What else? All right, very good. So that brings us to 15.1, public comment.
Okay, we have two hands raised. First is Kristi Solis. Kristi, if you can state your name and address, you will have two minutes to make a comment. I don't know if she's on there, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kristi Solis, I'm at 56 Peachtree Circle. I'd like to ask the board to consider making a motion to modify football's risk status. As it stands, under the clearly adopted Montgomery County guidelines, football is labeled as high risk. I'd like to point out that these guidelines are without modifications to the individual sport. The link at the bottom of the Monaco guidelines that you adopted sends you to the CHOP policy lab, the one that the board felt strongly about last meeting as being correct. That policy cites the CDC link. In the CDC link, it clearly states steps to making a high-risk sport a moderate risk. Here's a direct quote, "For close-contact sports, play may be modified to safely increase distance between players. Players and coaches can focus on individual skill-building versus competition, limit the time players spend close to others by playing full contact only in game-type situations, and decrease the number of competitions during a season. Respectfully, board, whatever type of season we would have, if spring does open up, we would be limiting the number of competitions. The team can keep to only full-team contact during competitions. They would also wear spit shields and gloves, two additional safety precautions not even suggested by the Centers for Disease Control. As you guys mentioned, Governor Wolf just announced spectators are allowed at sports, as well, which further indicates the risk is lowering. The school is also now distributing COVID wave." The school is also now distributing COVID waivers. So in the words of Dr. Shirk, please let the parents decide. Our very own high school principal is the president of PAC and is quoted as staying full seam ahead with fall sports with a possible spring session. Yet this classification would make it impossible to play at any time the entire year. I'd like to make one last point that has not been the focus. Getting rid of football hits the hardest in families with socioeconomic disparities. Taking away a senior season can change whether or not an athlete makes it to college, as well as whether or not they can afford to go. According to the NCAA, 86% of student college athletes live in poverty. I watched a senior last year who hadn't been a standout player prior earn his spot his senior year, make a name for himself, and is now playing football at LBC. I truly don't think that would have happened without a senior year. I know there's a misconception that football gets everything. Hamon and I used to think the same way. That was until I became a parent of a high school football player. The amount of time, effort, fundraising, and charity these boys and us parents do is astronomical. At the end of the day, it's supposed to be about the kids, so make it about all of them. Please make a motion to vote in these modifications as recommended by the CDC, moving football from high risk to moderate risk and give our boys a chance to play. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Christy. Okay, next, next we have Stacy Messing. Stacy, I think you probably know the drill. State your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you. There you go. Stacy, you're unmuted. Stacy, we can't hear you. If you are talking, we can't hear you. Wait, now she's muted again. Okay, Stacy, you are unmuted again, but we still can't hear you.
Can I hear the mute?
Okay, maybe we should just switch to Jason McHugh and then see if Stacy can, if she, if she actually does want to speak, if she can maybe fix. I don't know if it's on her end or our end, but. Okay, are we able to, there you go. Yes, we can hear you now.
I was connected to Raycons for the first time, so I guess I can't speak with them, and I'm sorry. So my address is 1979 Summit Way. I wasn't going to raise my hand based on the agenda, but the new business comments got, had me sort of concerned. I recall at the marathon meeting that the laws regarding busing were reviewed and that we were in full compliance with busing non-public students based on what the laws require and what we're doing for our public students. While I don't object to busing non-public students, I am very concerned that the Western Montgomery students, although being bused from Potts Grove to Western Montgomery Center and back, that leaves, you know, a morning trip for the morning kids and an afternoon trip for the afternoon kids, that's reliant on parents who work, I work an hour away. I've had to modify my entire schedule and my entire routine, as well as work on carpools and, and get my daughter involved. So my point is that it wasn't an easy feat to be able to get my son from my house to the high school, which is not even that far away, so that he can get the bus from the high school to his program in the morning. And so for, for consideration to be given to people who, to students who have, who are attending a non-public school by their own choice, that's a private school, without, without considering what the public school students are receiving, i.e. a trip from their house to the school or from their house to the Western Montgomery Center, I think would be short-sighted and very unfair, as we are also paying taxes. And I have no problem getting my son to the high school so that he can do the Western Montgomery Center trip back and forth from there so that the district saves money under these circumstances. I have not one complaint about that unless I see that there's other students that aren't in the public system that are getting that, that service. And I just want to make sure that the board seriously considers what they're doing for all of the students and that it is fair. Right now, it seems as fair as it can be without opening busing up all around. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Stacy. I did just want to say, if those are your dogs in your picture there, they are adorable.
They are our dead dogs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have two other ones that are equally as cute, but I'm not ready to not give these guys homage, so.
I understand, been there. So anyway, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
All right, Jason McHugh, you are next. Again, you know the drill. State your name and address. And I, you're not quite unmuted yet. There you go, you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
All right, Jason McHugh, 970 Ivy Lane. And one, I want to thank the board for getting to this before midnight. It's great, I can get some sleep tonight. And two, I want to reiterate what was stated earlier. It's a good thing that Potts Grove, not being healthcare experts on the board, have chosen to follow guidelines. I'd like to see those guidelines followed across the board. If you look at the Montgomery County report that points back to the CHOP report, it's more than just sports, it's also about the reopening of schools. And if we're looking at the 5% positivity rate, we've been under that rate since middle of June, according to what it's listing on the Monaco site. So I'd love to hear on the next board meeting some minutes around how we're planning the reintroduction of a hybrid program, when that's going to happen, and probably put an emphasis on special ed, since you mentioned that earlier, because they're the ones that are going to be in a greater need of getting face-to-face, one-on-one services with the aides and the teachers. So I'd like to see consistency if we're following guidelines for Monaco and CHOP for not only sports, but the opening of the school itself. And I'd love to see some discussion on this on the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right, that's it. No more hands raised. Oh, wait, we have one more that came in just now. Mindy Kern. If you can state your name and address, you will have two minutes.
Okay, Mindy Kern, can you come over to me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Mindy Kern, 1286 Whitespire Circle. I'm sorry about the delay, I thought my hand was already up. Since approaching the subject of bringing back football and the other, the other things that you'd want to bring up, the discussion about band. I know that it was marching band, I know that it was touched on last time. Given that marching band has been using the covers for their horn instruments, they have been able to practice the six-foot distance that seem, you know, that covers everything. It doesn't seem like any of the other district bands have, have made the, the jump to doing the 20-foot distance. You know, the band director, Mrs. Z, has done a fabulous job of trying, you know, keeping the kids socially distanced, doing everything that they possibly can to keep everyone safe. And everyone has been safe, no one has been sick, they've been doing a great job. But to, to do the 20-foot distance is nearly impossible. It would mean giving up about half the students in the band having to give up the instruments that they play. So if we could, you know, make a motion to consider keeping the six-foot distance, the, you know, those woodwind instruments are already using the covers that's covering up the, any kind of, basically the same as using a mask. And if we're, same thing, if we're allowing lower-contact sports to be right there next to each other, like a field hockey or something like that, there should be no reason why we can't allow marching band to do the same. So thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. All right, now that is it. No more hands raised.
Okay. That being the case, we've taken all the public comments. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, we have plenty of those. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So without objection, thank you very much.